I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Mr. Bekowski.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Here. Mr. Bada.
Here.
Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiaji.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam. Ms. Hallam? Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy. Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus. Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
Of 12 members present at the moment.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll have the 2026 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan Presentation. Madam County Executive.
Thank you, President Katina, and Councilperson Hallam, welcome, which will no doubt be a thrilling budget address, so I'm glad that you could join us. It's starting to feel like fall, and that means it is budget time here in Allegheny County. So, thank you all for hosting me this evening to present my 2026 Comprehensive Budget for Allegheny County. So first, I want to start off with some gratitude. Thank you, County Council, for your partnership. You know, last year, we came together and we passed a balanced budget that kept the county fully functioning without severe program cuts or layoffs. And because of you and because of that budget, 911 calls are getting answered in a timely fashion. DPW are out there paving roads and bridges. Our county police are solving homicides at an unprecedented rate. Pools were open this summer and fully staffed with lifeguards. The Health Department is up and running with vaccine clinics. A thousand new units of housing is being developed downtown and across this county. And millions were invested in legacy and emerging industries and small businesses, and so much more great work happens throughout the county because of our ability to pay for it. And if you voted for that budget, you should take credit for it. Our decision was worth it. The credit rating agency Moody's reaffirmed our financial position in September with a credit rating of AAIII with a stable outlook. They noted professionalism of county staff as one of the reasons that they think so highly of Allegheny County. So I want to take a moment to thank the directors and your teams for your stable leadership and your unwavering professionalism. Thank you for being here tonight with us, and thank you for making this county run and serving the people of Allegheny County each and every day. You know, Moody's also noted that they are comfortable with our rating and stable outlook because of our millage increase last year. That allowed us to replenish our reserves. Without that millage increase, we undoubtedly would have been downgraded. I say this fully aware that it is election season, and there are people who are running for this esteemed body who seem to have some magical thinking about how budgets work and who seem to feel comfortable lobbing insults from the cheap seats at many of you. We've seen, we're seeing enough shenanigans and political posturing around budgets in DC and Harrisburg, and I am proud how functional we are here at the county level. And you should be proud of the work that you're doing. If you voted for the budget last year, you helped Allegheny County residents buy their first home, you outfitted police officers with bulletproof vests, you invested in economic development that is creating jobs throughout our region. Together, we are getting things done for the great people of this county. And with that, I am proud to present fiscal year 2026 county operating budget of $1.2 billion as part of the overall $3 billion comprehensive fiscal plan. You can all exhale because we are not requesting a millage increase this year. This is an operating budget that only grows 1.5% from last year, representing an extremely disciplined approach to managing the county. Typically, 3% to 4% growth is typical, but we are going beyond, above and beyond to carefully manage every last dollar. We've gone through great lengths to keep costs down, and I want to take a moment to share some of the highlights with you. We've worked very hard to find efficiencies without major impacts to our services or our personnel. In total, these efforts have freed up nearly $15 million in operating savings. Just to outline quickly some of the measures we've taken, we've rebid and renegotiated major county contracts, including contracts for our employee healthcare, agency nurse contracts, and IT services. We conducted a benefits audit to ensure we aren't covering ineligible spouses or dependents. In this budget, we are proposing to close approximately 685 vacant county positions. About 35 of these positions are funded vacant positions; the rest are unfunded. We are closely managing our agency nurse contracts at the Kain Centers to make sure we aren't overscheduling on nursing shifts while maintaining quality care. We are also responsibly negotiating our union contracts so we can both recognize the value of our employees and pay them fairly, but also maintain cost certainty for the county over the next few years. We are renegotiating and eliminating rent for county offices. And finally, we are implementing a new tiered rate healthcare premium for employees. It will allow the county to better control healthcare costs for employees and more fairly distribute those costs. We believe that these are administrative fixes that will result in an important $15 million in savings, but they do not require a reduction in services or layoffs, which is a good thing. So I want to talk about what is driving the costs here in the county. So healthcare is a major cost driver for us this year. This is, you know, something that you hear if you talk to any major employer. Tariffs have also driven up costs for things like construction materials, and labor costs continue to increase as well. But I do have to note that the single largest contributor to the increased costs for the county in the 2026, in 2026, will be cost-related to the increase in the jail population. We expect around $10 million in additional costs because jail operations and prescription costs for the larger-than-anticipated population of incarcerated individuals at the ACJ. Last month, I mentioned some positive news, that homicides year-to-date are on a, are at a record low. Other types of crime are falling as well. Yet the jail population has increased dramatically in the last year because of the length of stay and the speed with which cases are adjudicated. We cannot keep the county's finances balanced with the jail population increasing at this rate. It is truly not fair to the taxpayers to spend their money like this while crime is falling. My administration has taken several steps in partnership with the Department of Human Services, jail administration, police, the courts, and other stakeholders to explore programs that keep the public safe and keep people who do not pose a risk to public safety out of jail. Recently, we announced a mobile competency restoration and support team to help people who have, who've been deemed not competent to stand trial find alternative support to being held at the ACJ. We also launched an alternative response initiative to engage behavioral health first responders on emergency calls to help de-escalate situations that do not need to result in people going to jail. We've also expanded our Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, or LEAD, program to 16 municipalities and are working with 77 community organizations to help steer people who have regular contact with the criminal legal system away from arrest and towards long-term case management. We recently expanded our investments in reentry programs to reduce recidivism and improve quality-of-life outcomes for people leaving jail. The Public Defender's Office has increased representation for clients at arraignments. We've also hired an excellent new warden who is committed to these programs in improving outcomes for people who are at the jail. And yet, despite these efforts, my administration cannot control whether judges allow individuals to stay in alternative housing options, if a judge allows someone to be in the community while they await a case resolution, or the length of time it takes to resolve cases in court. And those are factors that can drive up the jail population. Thankfully, we do have great partners at the court, and I look forward to continuing to work with the president, judge, and others. And with their help, my hope is that we can process people through the criminal justice system in a more appropriate timeline and bring our detention practices more in line with national best practices, and overall, reduce the population of the jail safely. So we are in this moment where we are trying to do more with less. We are trying to make do in a time of economic uncertainty, and I'm going to highlight a few ways that the county is doing more and delivering for the people here that we all represent with less, and find other revenue streams that fund important projects. So first, I want to thank RAD for stepping up and making a historic investment into our parks for 2026. I think it's really rad that they make that investment because it helps alleviate pressures on other parts of our budget. The county also applied for multiple redevelopment assistance capital program grants from the state for capital improvements at the Kane McKeesport Highland Detention Center at Schuman, the Police and Fire Academy, and our Boys Park Swimming Pool. We are hopeful to receive that state funding, and our total submissions were north of $16.5 million. DHS has also been successful in some grant-making, or some, some grants that they applied for. So they received a grant from the Housing and Urban Development Grant for $1.5 million to support the Allegheny Home Modification Program, and this is a critical program for older adults. DHS also received a $375,000 grant from Arnold Ventures to support a Housing and Shelter Assessment Needs Grant to ensure unhoused neighbors are supported. And overall, the county's grants budget typically includes hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue from the state and federal government, which funds an array of things like public safety to human services. Since the state and federal budgets are currently in limbo, we are making our best guesses, and we believe that they will largely be flat-funded. But the one thing we do know for certain is that several large grants have closed, so there's actually a significant decrease in the 2026 Grants and Special Accounts Budget portion of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan compared to 2025. American Rescue Plan funding has been completely spent, must be completely spent by the end of 2026, and there is less than $10 million in cash remaining. This, along with many other COVID-related grants, have been removed from the grants budget, which means a decrease in grants across many of our departments. Unfortunately, my administration has also seen a reduction in other grants due to federal funding cuts. Our Charging and Infrastructure Grant of $4 million was cut from sustainability. Our Environmental Justice Government-to-Government Grant was cut by $1.5 million. Our Health Department received two cuts. There was a $200,000 reduction in our air programs via the EPA, and a reduction of $200,000 to support our STI program. The president's budget, which is being negotiated now in Congress, proposed cuts that would mean more than a $100 million hit to our county's budget annually. While it is unlikely that Congress will ultimately pass that budget that the president introduced, anything that is reduced on top of these other reductions are going to impact individuals and entities across this county, and that's layered on top of cuts we've already seen, like less funding for NIH research, or reduction to SNAP benefits, cuts to the arts libraries, public media, and so much more. We also are in a situation where our state budget is 98 days late, and our Budget Office has estimated that the county is missing out on more than $100 million in reimbursement for every quarter the state fails to pass a budget. Obviously, this puts financial pressure on us to burner through our own cash to make payroll, which hurts our overall cash, cash position as we're less invested and therefore generating less interest off of our investments. So we're trying to maintain discipline in these uncertain times. So unlike the slash-and-burn approach to budgeting favored by other levels of government, we believe the county's funds, we can manage the county's funds with discipline and maintain services at the same time. The county is prepared to make adjustments next year that will further bring discipline to our operations. One big step in that direction is reimagining the role of budget and finance and creating a new Department of Budget Management and Budget to more closely and effectively manage county expenditures. We are consolidating several county functions related to procurement, performance, and contract management under one office so we can ensure all county contracts are bid in a timely manner. Our meeting county performance standards and county taxpayers are getting the best deal for county services. Right now, these functions are diffused across various departments within the county, and they're uncoordinated. The county misses opportunities for streamlining, for cost savings, and for better service delivery overall. These operations should be smart, effective, and efficient, and under my administration, they will be. This year, we have already identified some redundancies. We've combined positions and teams and eliminated duplicative positions. We will continue to look for opportunity to restructure county departments and operations to find efficiencies and keep our budget balanced. As I mentioned in my last quarterly address, we are also laser-focused on growth and making smart, strategic investments with our economic development dollars. My administration, we are committed to balancing short-term action with long-term strategy and planning. Through our comprehensive planning work, we are setting a roadmap for decades to come, aligning housing, transportation, business investment, workforce development, and infrastructure so that growth can not only be strong, but also sustainable. It also ensures that everyone in Allegheny County can share in that prosperity. Limited resources means that we must be strategic and focused and leverage these investments to maximize impact in, in communities across Allegheny County. So we are working every day across agencies, across municipal lines, with our regional partners to ensure that growth can happen and that it can benefit everyone. So this budget I have before you, I view this as a moral document, as a list of priorities for my administration that reflect the values of the people of Allegheny County. Because at the end of the day, budgets just aren't numbers. They're a reflection of all of our values. They are moral documents. We see it clearly at the federal level, where the Trump administration is trying to inflict cruelty and chaos through their budget. We see it in the political grandstanding that's happening in Harrisburg, and we have an opportunity for our budget to invest in what matters most to the residents here in Allegheny County. So in this budget, we are committed to continuing to serve working families that need some help through human services, through human services providers like Aubertly and McKeesport that provide workforce training and foster care services and so much more. We are committing to helping seniors who may be experiencing loneliness or need some help around the house get connected to a volunteer companion. We are giving young people, thousands of young people, meaningful work experience through our Learn and Earn program so they can grow their careers and grow roots here in this county. And we have helped more than 300 homes become safer places to live because of lead remediation through our Lead-Free Homes Program. We've housed more than 550 formerly homeless neighbors through our 500 and 500 Initiative. We've launched First Home Allegheny to help dozens of people buy their first home in neighborhoods around our county. And we're helping businesses of all sizes create new jobs, from advanced manufacturing to coffee shops on Main Street through our economic development programs. And that's what this county is all about, about helping people, about making sure that people know that government can be a force for good in their lives. We can deliver services with competency and compassion for the people throughout Allegheny County. I know we can do that together. So thank you for listening to my remarks this evening. I know you'll be meeting with Director Cox and County Manager Fornier. I trust that they will make themselves available during this process, and really, we can have transparent and honest dialogue through this process. Thank you for your time.
Would you like to make the motion to introduce the bills this evening?
I motion to introduce the bills this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to add these bills to the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Jared, would you please read the titles of the bills?
The first is an ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing the tax levy upon all real property subject to taxation within the limits of Allegheny County for fiscal year 2026. The next is a resolution of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting an operating budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business of Allegheny County and for meeting debt charges for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026. The next is a resolution of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting a capital budget pursuant to Article 4, Section 2, and Article 7, Section 4 of the Home Rule Charter by setting forth appropriations to pay the expenses for capital expenditures during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026. And the last is a resolution of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting the Grants Budget, Special Accounts Budget, and Agency Fund Budget by setting forth appropriations to pay said expenses during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026. All are sponsored by the Chief Executive, and all will receive bill numbers tomorrow.
Thank you. All of these will go to Budget and Finance once you receive the bill numbers. Madam, Madam Chief Executive, would you like to entertain any questions? I know there's, there's obviously going to be a lot of time once we go through the budget, but if you'd like to entertain questions?
I'm happy to take questions from council members.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I will save the vast majority of my questions for Director Cox, but thank you very much, Madam County Executive. The one question I have is, you mentioned the $100 million per quarter that we're currently losing out on due to the lack of a state budget. Do you all have numbers on how long we're able to last with that current burn rate based on where our savings are at?
I think that is a question best answered by Director Cox. We are in a much better position than many other counties because of our size and the professionalism in which we manage the budget. So, you know, right now, we're not sounding the alarm, but it is tight, and we will breathe a sigh of relief when Harrisburg delivers us a budget.
Understood. Thank you very much. Director Cox will be following up.
Councilmember Hallam?
Hi. First of all, really appreciated the information about what's causing our jail population to grow. I would love for us to work together to figure out how to stop that from happening. I see a similar level of increase with the Kain Hospital is, can you speak at all to if that's a similar, like, is the population of the Kains going up as well in proportion to the jail? Because it seems like a pretty comparable increase in their budget as well.
So with Kain, I will again let the budget director speak, speak to the specifics, but the Kain system has a lot of capacity to accept new patients if we hired more nurses. And we have created a recruitment strategy to bring more nurses to the bedside at Kain, you know, bringing contract nurses also into county employment, which ultimately saves us money in the long term. And, you know, we're seeing a lot of senior assisted living facilities close down because the private market just doesn't support it. So we are actually, you know, not only are we taking those individuals, but we're becoming the place of choice for many, which is good. So it increases our population at the Kain facilities overall, but it also opens up different revenue streams to help us achieve financial sustainability.
Okay, cool. I appreciate that answer. And then my next question is, I know a decent number of community organizations over the past couple days have received emails about, you know, hey, we don't have a state budget. We don't know how we're going to reimburse you for existing contracts that you're in. And I was just wondering if you could speak to, like, how that kind of stuff is reflected in the budget that you presented today?
So John is always available to answer questions like this. I can speak to the, you know, accounting that happens in order to make sure that we can continue to deliver services, but, you know, we are committed to continuing to deliver those services that are vital to people across the county.
Okay, but this presented budget isn't relying on anything specific in the state budget that we would need?
We are making our best guess, which is that most of what we rely on from the state will be flat-funded.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the assumption that is present in this budget.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else this evening? Harry, no one else. Thank you, Madam County Executive, for your time this evening.
Thank you, President Katina, and members of council.
We'll now have proclamations slash certificates. 13674-25, yes, it is.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Ms. Hallam and Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus are both now present. 13674-25 is a proclamation honoring the resilience of the striking journalist members of the Newspaper Guild of Pittsburgh, standing strong against Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam.
Steve, are you coming too? Mike, you're going to be scary on there. Yeah, everybody come up. I'm honoring all of you collectively. Please come on up. You deserve to be recognized and stand at the front of this room for all your hard work. Yeah, guys, we can go anywhere. Oh, hell yeah, hold on. Good? Now I match? Steve, you too. I know you want to take pictures, but you got to be here too. Well, as you can see, we have a lot of people to honor here tonight with this proclamation, and I think the language of it speaks for itself, so I'm just going to go ahead and get started. A proclamation recognizing the striking journalist members of the Newspaper Guild of Pittsburgh. Whereas Pittsburgh Post-Gazette Union journalists have been on strike since October 18, 2022 in protest of Post-Gazette's management's unfair labor practices and multiple violations of the workers' rights. And whereas, union journalists at the Post-Gazette have been bargaining since 2017 to reach a new collective bargaining agreement with management. Post-Gazette management refuses to move off of their many bad-faith contract proposals that would strip union members of the majority of their hard-earned workplace rights. And whereas, in July 2020, in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic, Post-Gazette management took advantage of statewide travel restrictions to illegally declare an end to bargaining and stripped union members of their workplace rights, including five-figure increases in some workers' health insurance, removing the guarantee of a 40-hour work week, gutting the Short-Term Disability Plan that workers rely on when they the short-term disability plan that workers rely on when they get sick, shrinking of paid time off, and removal of overtime guarantees, among other violations of federal labor law. And whereas, on the picket line in Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, and beyond, striking workers have faced on-duty and privately hired off-duty cops helping the Post-Gazette break the picket lines by force and threat of arrest simply for exercising their rights. In fact, the executive editor of the Post-Gazette sought to prosecute one of his own reporters on provably false pretenses. To further undermine striking workers, Post-Gazette management has hired nearly 40 replacement scabs to steal the work of these journalists who are fighting for a stronger workplace, all while the company continues to flaunt their blatant lawbreaking in court. And whereas, the potential for a democratic society depends on us all having access to reliable, independently-reported information in order to make decisions about our lives, and Post-Gazette leadership is actively working to undermine the possibility by perpetuating one of the most lawless, union-busting operations in the entire country. And whereas, by putting their fingers on the scale for ultra-wealthy people who violate the rights of our neighbors, public trust in the news is undermined at a time when now, more than ever, we need a shared understanding of reality with our neighbors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Bethany Hallam, do hereby recognize the striking journalist members of the Newspaper Guild of Pittsburgh, who have been holding the picket line for three years against ownership's relentlessly lawless union busting, and are vowing to stand strong on the picket line until Post-Gazette leadership comes to its senses, quits breaking federal law, and restores their rights.
My name's Ed Blazina, one of the striking workers at the Post-Gazette. Been with the company since 1992, and we have been fighting this battle for, since 2017 when our contract expired, but even before that, we went out of our way to help the company by agreeing to several concessionary contracts along the way. Till it finally reached a point where you have to feed your family, and we took a stand that we would not take any more cuts. Ordinarily, when you negotiate a new contract, each side has five or six things they want to change in the contract. The company came in with more than 180 things they wanted to change in the contract, had no interest in reaching a deal. So, here we are now. We're on strike for three years. We're waiting for a federal court decision out of the Third Circuit in Philadelphia that we hope will put us back to work and punish the company for blatantly breaking federal law. We certainly appreciate the proclamation today. Sorry, I knew all my other words except that. And thank you for your time.
Come on up, picture time. Guessing that by being in this picture, you all pledged to not talk to the staffs of Pittsburgh.
Three, two, one. One more.
I would be remiss to fail to point out, these folks haven't had a raise in 20 years. The last raise they had was due in their 2006 contract, which they gave back to the Post-Gazette, and they haven't had an increase since then, which is unheard of. I've been doing this for 58 years in 26 different states, and I've never seen anything like this, ever. They're the worst, absolute worst. And those of you who subscribe to them or helping them, do not subscribe to that paper. Thank you.
The remaining proclamations will be read into the record. 13675-25.
A proclamation proclaiming October 13, 2025, is United States Navy Day in Allegheny County and celebrating its 250th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
13676-25.
A proclamation congratulating the Fineview Citizens Council on the 30th Annual Fineview Step Challenge, sponsored by Councilmember Bada. A proclamation honoring the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation of Western Pennsylvania Chapter's 30th Anniversary of Pittsburgh's 50 Finest, sponsored by Councilmember Bada.
13678-25.
A proclamation recognizing the Western Penn Hills Community Action Incorporated on the occasion of its 31st anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulis.
We'll now have public comment on agenda items.
With several, first up is Jonathan Blanton.
My name is Jonathan Blanton. I live in Brighton Heights. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to ask that you vote in favor of increasing the air quality permit fees. Air quality in Allegheny County is something we've worked for decades to restore. After all that work, we still have countless unnecessary deaths every year from thermal inversions trapping our pollution. We have countless children developing asthma. We have countless seniors who can't leave their homes many days of the year. Air quality is a resource. It can be spent on factories that might bring jobs or make things that improve our lives. It can be saved and, in fact, return investment interest in the form of people and businesses moving to our county. And it can be stolen when it's left unmonitored, unguarded, for the reckless and malicious use at all of our expense. I ask tonight that you ensure that the single agency who stands to protect the public from harmful air pollution is empowered to do so, that the funds we are legally mandated to spend on air quality monitoring be collected from those businesses who have the greatest to gain from their careful application, and that we continue to leave a more livable, breathable Allegheny County to those who come after us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Gavin Neal.
Hello, my name is Gavin Neal. As heard, I'm a resident of Gibsonia, PA, and in the similar vein, I also came here to comment on the air permitting fees. I know right now is not the best time to go against the economic prosperity of our region, but also, I believe that people in the environment have a fair share as well and should be prioritized at this time as well. So, thank you.
Next up is Natalie Ford.
My name is Natalie Ford. I'm a resident of Ingram, and then I am also the environmental justice organizer for 412 Justice, a local nonprofit that does environmental justice, education, and economic justice work. And I am also here to provide public comment on, in support of, the increase in air permitting fees. So, working firsthand in the Mon Valley of, in the communities of Claret and Braddock, I have heard and witnessed the toll that air pollution has taken, and these stories often are told in hopes that it will fall on the right ears, but most of the time, it doesn't. So, we must present statistics and evidence to people in power. There's a lot of evidence and statistics that the air there is horrible, and it is giving people multiple health issues, cancer, high infant mortality rates, asthma, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are about five of the greatest industrial toxic air polluters in the Mon Valley. So, two of the ones that I work around are Claret and Coke Works and Edgar Thompson Works. And they contribute to the, we are, Allegheny County, we are in the top 2% of counties nationwide for added cancer risk from these industrial polluters. So, with all this evidence gathered, that's great and all, but what can the Health Department do to leverage this evidence against these polluters without adequate funding? In order to get adequate funding, these air permitting fees need to be increased so that the Health Department is able to staff and resource properly and to actually use these laws and leverage them to protect our air. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Next, Nicholas Bartel.
My name is Nicholas Bartel. I'm a proud Beachview resident and the Clean Air Campaign Manager with Penn Future, an environmental advocacy nonprofit, working for a stable climate, clean air, and pure water, both here in Allegheny County and across the Commonwealth. I want to thank Councilmembers Nakaradi-Chapkus and Prizio for introducing this common sense air quality permit resolution. This resolution's needed now more than ever. As I spoke at the last council meeting, we're seeing funding shortfalls and Title V permit delays leading to more polluted air, more ER visits, and more missed school and workdays. According to Industrious Labs, air pollution from the Claret and Coke Works and Edgar Thompson Works are linked with 3,800 missed workdays and 6,500 missed school days every single year. Together with the Cleveland Cliffs-Mineson-Coke facility, they lead up to $1.4 billion in additional healthcare costs and cut $16 million from our economy every single year. That's money not being spent in local businesses, not strengthening our neighborhoods, and not flowing into county municipal revenues that will fund our vital services that we heard earlier this evening. But it doesn't have to be this way. Clean air means kids in classes, workers making sure that they're getting steady paychecks, and seniors breathing clean air and breathing easier on hot days. It means families aren't drowning in medical bills. Companies are competing with each other on a fair, equal playing field, and our communities are growing stronger. With steadier paychecks and healthier workers, we can do better to support our local economy and ensure a resilient tax base. Today, our system is tilted. On top of air pollution from these facilities being linked to tens of thousands of days missed from school and work, costing us tens of millions of dollars, they also topped this year's Health Department's violation list. These same facilities are posing major public health and safety risks. They require oversight, and that only happens when the Health Department has the funding to do its job. Underfunded enforcement lets a few toxic companies cut corners, pollute more, and profit by breaking the rules. And when they do, the many responsible companies are undercut even though they follow the law. That's not right. Fair, consistent enforcement changes that. It protects our workers and families and ensures that responsible companies aren't undercut by those who don't follow the rules. As this resolution moves through committee, I urge its prompt vote to be returned back to this body for its passage. In considering this legislation, imagine a world where businesses play by the same set of rules. Kids can engage more in the classroom, and residents, from our newest newborn to our most elderly resident, are safe to take a deep breath with open windows. As we take a step toward that world that we can reach together, on behalf of Penn Future, we respectfully ask you pass ordinance 13680-25. Thank you.
And last up is Natasha Washington.
Hello, everybody. Hi. I'm Natasha Washington, resident of Wilkinsburg, also serving as a Wilkinsburg Councilwoman. And I actually am the former communications manager of the Breathe Project, and I'm now the campaign director of the Black Appalachian Coalition. Just to briefly introduce, the Black Appalachian Coalition is an organization that works with Black residents throughout the Appalachian region, which we are also in, to support them in their environmental and economic injustices and turn their stories into policy movement that can serve to protect them and to heal them. So, I'm actually very happy to be here today, because I first want to thank, of course, Michelle Nakaradi-Chapkus for the tireless work that you've been doing to get this on the agenda and to, you know, bring these conversations together, especially also Paul Klein, who's been coming to our town halls and speaking with our residents, and all of the people who have been supporting us. I can name many more, so excuse me if I did say your name specifically, but thank you for the county members that have been talking to us and supporting us through this and, you know, having patience and grace with us as we've been having with you all to have these conversations, to bring this back onto the agenda. I know it was a lot of tireless work, and I hope we didn't talk your ears off too much, but I did want to make sure that we express that gratitude to you. But I want to say that as we are advocating every, you know, meeting that we can come to, we're mainly wanting to make sure that all these health statistics that you all are hearing, especially the ones that are mostly affecting Black women, are being heard and that they're being addressed. And we know that pollution from many of our studies are the reasons why a lot of these health issues are happening, not only to people who live around the Claret and Coke Works and other industries, but also to the people who work there as well. I will say, on August 11, I was really surprised by the news that I had heard waking up, and I am so thankful to a lot of our organizations that went out into the communities to give residents resources, and I'm thankful to all of the electors that came out to speak about the issue and to give some type of information to the residents who were scared around that moment. But I do want to say that the reason why I'm most thankful for this permit fee passing and this increase happening is not only that it will support our Health Department, who I guess y'all will know during budget time, will need the support and need the funding to adequately have these permits go through, so we know that these facilities are running safely. But I also wanted to make sure that we know that this could have been a preventable situation. A lot of us have came here and stood and talked about a lot of the incidents that have happened. There was an incident on February 5 where we had a minor battery explosion. On March 29 and 30, we saw smoke from our stacks that was a minor explosion. And on June 2, there was an equipment breakdown that led to a lot of flaring, and we see these things on our cameras, as you all saw on the news on the cameras as well, and it really concerns us. So, I thank you for putting preventable methods and holding polluters accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have approval of minutes 13679-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the September 9, 2025, regular meeting of council.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Any liaison reports this evening? Hearing?
Board of Elections member. A lot of people have been asking about ballots, over-the-counter voting, if, you know, when you can come down, apply for a mail-in ballot, fill it out, submit it all in one stop. That'll start tomorrow, which is Wednesday. The people who have requested mail-in ballots already, those will all be out by the end of day Thursday. So, tomorrow and Thursday are going to be the day that they're really going to get all the mail-in ballots that have already been requested out. Thank you.
New business ordinances and resolutions. 13680-25.
A resolution of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying air quality permit application and permit fee increases approved by the Allegheny County Health Department pursuant to the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Sections 505-16E, 505-17G, 505-21D, 505-23F, 505-25E2C, 505-28A7, 505-48A4A6, 505-48B4C, 505-49A3, and 505-49C8HD, sponsored by Councilmembers Nakaradi-Chapkus and Prizio.
That will go to the Committee on Health and Human Services.
Can I please be added as a co-sponsor of that bill?
Got them, Jared?
Got them.
Got them all? Okay. 13681-25.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to allow Invisio Group to use certain county-owned real property in connection with a demonstration of firefighting, imaging, and communication apparatus, and to film Sam, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to the Committee on Public Safety. We'll now have public comment on general items.
First up is Jacob Poole. First up is Jacob Poole.
Previous name is Zoltan Joltjakob. I'm here to talk about various issues related to employment and immigration. The Greater Pittsburgh Metro has estimated roughly 100,000 people who live here from various parts of Eastern Europe, like I was, brought here in the last 30, 40, 50 years, pretty much like I was by force. People don't talk about this because it's a very quiet area, and no immigrant actually comes up here and talks about their immigration. In the last three years I've been coming here, I'm the only person that's an immigrant in the Pittsburgh metro in Allegheny County, and he comes up here and talks about how immigrated to the area. And this is how I immigrated to the area. Between the Soviet Union collapse and Yugoslavia wars, American military, paramilitary, and organizations collected children from Ukraine, from Serbia, and from Croatia into children's camp with thousands and thousands of kids, changed our names, altered our records, and brought us to the Pittsburgh area by force, abducting us. And I was 12 when I was brought here, so I said, hey, why are you child abducted me? And in response, I got secret medical procedures, medical files created around me to hold me captive, and falsified documents. And this is how I exist here 25 years after. You can check my records at Career Link. I've been there for four years trying to get a regular job, and people laugh at me there. They hand me secret lists under the table, looking at me like I'm a slave because I was brought to America as a slave, gathered up as children in the thousands in Eastern Europe and brought here as a slave. And that's what, when I go to Career Link and I give them my resume, they laugh at me. And this is hard to believe in this room, that you can go to Career Link and people laugh at you, because they know I'm an Eastern European immigrant brought here as a slave. And when I give them my resume, they say, no, you can't get a regular job. I applied to 3,000 jobs in the last four years working with Career Link, and not one single job interview. Instead, they're giving me secret lists under the table where slaves, child abducted from Eastern Europe who live in the Pittsburgh area in the thousands, we're supposed to be working at. I have a record of being given a couple dozen slave sites, working with organizations such as Career Link, Google Workforce Development, the Pittsburgh Earn Program, all funded by this budget. Why I'm alone in Allegheny County, living in Edgewood, where the police told me I can't go to come to the police station, they'll kick me out because I'm not allowed to file police reports, so I'm being held captive, alone, fake names, child abducted here, no family, no friends, nobody, trying to survive, being taken to human trafficking sites here every single week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Arthur Teeman.
Not here?
I, Sizouni.
I don't see him.
Yeah.
Brian Engler.
I don't see him.
Yeah.
Brian Engler, West Smithon. You know me as President of the Union at the jail. I actually think the budget talk was pretty interesting tonight. For the last three years, I've gone to the county manager and the controller's office about the 1,500% increase in overtime costs among the sergeants at the jail. They have run from $5,800 to $750,000. It's just unnecessary made up overtime. I hope you look into that at budget time. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the county executive came up with a solution for leg shackles at the hospital. She wants to have hospital security or police apply the leg shackles to the inmates. I believe the solution is a last ditch, bad faith compromise. The decision was made without any participation from the union at the jail. The referendum language prohibits the use of leg shackles for those who are in our custody. When hospital security applies these leg shackles, they are violating the referendum. According to our consulting attorney, custody boils down to who is preventing them from leaving and who is responsible for them, and that's Allegheny County Corrections Officers. My officers will not be unshackling leg shackles for people to use the restroom. When the county deliberately violates its own ordinance by broken a solution with hospital, police, or security, who shall be held liable? Is it the county? Is it the hospital? Each bathroom accommodation will violate the ordinance four times: to unshackle, reshackle, use the bathroom, unshackle, reshackle, go back to the bed. I've requested impact bargaining on this issue. Correctional officers will not violate the referendum. That's why we petition you, the council, to solve the unintended consequences of this political issue, which created a dangerous public safety issue. I believe your affirmative vote on our proposal provides the best solution legally and practically. It eliminates the safety concerns to the public as well as further litigation. Thank you.
Last up is Tanisha Long.
Sir, Jarrett, could you give my application?
I did not.
So, where do I have to speak?
All right. Tanisha Long, I'm here to talk about leg shackles, the one thing that we are all so very sick and tired of hearing about. One of the things I would like to say when it comes to this petition that they brought forward, I would like to ask council if anyone has actually reviewed the signatures on this petition.
Every single one.
Because I will happily bring them to council next time I'm here. You have a lot of signatures that are written in the same exact handwriting for multiple people. Looking through the signatures and reviewing them, you have people who are not registered to vote in this county. And one of the things that I could not find in anything involving the county was a mechanism to challenge the signatures. So, right now, it looks like council is receiving a petition from, you know, Mr. Engler and Mr. Kostenowitz, with no proof that these people who actually signed the petition vote in Allegheny County are the people who signed the petition. And for any other voter-led referendum, we have to verify the signatures. And that was not done in this case. And I think you do a disservice to the voters of Allegheny County if we're going to take this up in front of council with no signature verification and no means for us to challenge it. That's actually a problem. I'm going to go through every single signature, and I will bring it next week, to show you how many of these would be invalid and how many of these would be reasonably questioned. Above and beyond that, I think Mr. Kostenowitz and Mr. Engler like to bring up a lot about the referendum and what the intent is and what would violate the referendum, without no actual understanding of the referendum, when the people who wrote the referendum can tell you very much that this would not violate the referendum. And another thing is the issue of custody. When we talk about people in the hospital, we have been fighting for years to visit people who are incarcerated, and we're told that once they hit the hospital, they're in the custody of the sheriffs, even if the COs are there. And that has been a barrier to us being able to visit incarcerated people who are hospitalized. So, either they're not in the custody of the sheriffs, or they are in the custody of the COs. And in that case, we should be able to visit them. But that's an issue for the jail oversight board, or it's an issue for council, but you guys have to decide this issue of jurisdiction. But I don't think we should be voting on the leg shackle referendum at all until we figure out, A, if it violates the consent decree, B, if it violates the voter-pass referendum, or C, if people who sign this referendum, or actually the people who sign the referendum, are registered voters, or we do some signature verification. And I think it would be important for me to bring copies of those signatures to the next meeting, because you should see it for yourself. A lot are written in the same exact handwriting. It's actually kind of shocking, and a lot of them are coming from one district, which isn't representative of all of Allegheny County. Thank you.
Councilwoman Walton, will you have the video of what the first one referred to?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to read a letter from one of my constituents that wrote to me, Mayor-elect Patricia DiMarco of Forest Hills, regarding some efforts, activities that are being generated by President Trump. Dear Councilmember DeWitt Walton, I'm writing out of shock and horror at the remarks of President Trump to the gathered top leadership of the U.S. military forces worldwide. His intentions to use cities as training grounds for the military is appalling and totally contradictory to the intended and constitutionally provided use of national military forces. Trump described civil disturbances as the enemy from within. He added that the situation won't get out of control once you're involved. These remarks made on Monday, September 30th, were followed on Tuesday, October 1st, 2025, by military-style Black Hawk helicopter operations in an apartment building in Chicago in the middle of the night, rousing children and women in the outgrounds to be taken away separately by masked agents. No notice, no due process, no care for the effect on the people. This threat to call out our military forces in American cities over the objections of mayors and governors in the absence of any clear violent unrest or foreign invasion from the Constitution and basic sense of decency. I'm outraged at the prospect of the President basically inciting a civil war in the streets of America. I am horrified that entire communities are demonized and persecuted by ICE and the FBI based on profiling and generic categorizations as illegal aliens without evidence of a specific crime. To subject children to the terror of brutal home invasion in the middle of night is not acceptable in the Americans my father fought for. It is not okay for the government to turn the military on its citizens. This is not government of the people, by the people, and for the people. It is the grandizement of power by the few to suppress the many. Why is the outcry against this call for brutality not being raised to the rafters of the halls of Congress? This call for military exercises in domestic cities make democracy of the veterans who have served honorably for many years: Washington DC, Portland, Oregon, Los Angeles, Chicago. Will we be next? Will anyone care? We, the people, must stand up against this tyranny. Every person is entitled to be treated with dignity and respect. Every person is entitled to the rights guaranteed by the Constitution. People who come here to work, to seek opportunity and education, or to escape even worse persecution in their home countries, deserve common courtesy and the right of due process. The enormous amount of taxpayer dollars spent on these exercises in persecution and deportation should be spent on enhancing the resources and legal system for immigration services to process applicants more quickly. There will be fewer technically illegal aliens arrested while awaiting a proceeding. Indeed, many have been arrested and deported as they approach courtrooms for their hearings. This administration is making it clear that if you're a person of color, a woman, a person who is ill or has special needs, or came from another country, we are not welcome here. This is moving our country to a rule by fear instead of ruled by law. In the name of freedom, we're enslaved to an ideology of hero worship, to a president without empathy, without morals, and without any sense of the true greatness of this country. A country's greatness is not measured by the number and fame of its billionaires, but how well the least of its citizens are doing. Greatness is measured by the credibility and integrity among nations and by the stability and trust of its institutions of learning, science, technology, and culture. Greatness comes from showing leadership and care for the well-being of all of the people of this generation and for generations to come. As the Allegheny County Council deliberates many issues it faces, I ask that some thought be addressed to how we prepare to resist any attempts to have targeted enforcement of illegal aliens deportation take place in our communities. Our local police are sworn to uphold and protect the rights of our citizens. That includes ensuring respect and due process for all people, regardless of their status. Patricia DiMarco. I want to say, as a councilperson, I am deeply concerned about the attack on basic human rights that are taking place every day by the leadership of this country. I think that we need to figure out, as a council, what are we going to do? How are we going to respond? How are we going to ensure that the rights of all of Allegheny County residents be protected and respected? Will we be next? Will we be next? Will we be next? We must figure out some steps that we can take and we commit to for justice and equality for all. Thank you, Mr. President, for your presence. Thank you for that.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made and all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
I do think so. She's so good.
Mm-hmm.